Good evening, everyone. Seeing that the appointed time has arrived, the chair, and that we have quorum, the chair opens up the Wednesday, February 1st, 2023 meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board, being held here in the Wacoit Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts. The time is seven o'clock. I'd like to welcome everybody here, let you know that we're being video graphed and live broadcast on local channel 18, being streamed live on Mashpee, Town and Mashpee website, HTTPS colon slash slash WWW dot Mashpee MA dot gov slash channel hyphen 18. I'd like you all to rise and join with me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America into a republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
First matter is approval of minutes, review of minutes from January 18th, 2023. Is there any corrections?
No.
I didn't see any myself. I take a motion to accept the minutes of January 18th, 2023 as presented.
So be it.
Okay, so Dennis made the motion and Michael seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody abstaining or opposing? Okay. We'll do the next set of minutes, which is for January 25th at our next meeting. We have a public hearing here at 7:10 and 7:15, so we'll wait to open those up until the appointed time. Under new business, I'd like to skip. I, did you want to say something, Karen?
Excuse me, I just wondered if you had the letter from Mr. Corain.
I do, and we'll talk about it at 7:10. Under new business, I'd like to skip bullet point number one and go to vote to set public hearing date for special permit modification requested by Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC. I think there's a draft.
It's on the, it's on a back page of one here, so don't look for, it's on the backside of one of the pages. I also slipped a second one in there just in case, so.
So there's a, there's a public hearing notice. I've looked at the application, I think it's fine to go forward. The town planner was suggesting a date of Wednesday, March 1st, 2023 at 7:10. Is everyone here, March 1st?
Yeah.
I assume so. God willing.
Right, because, because it's, it's one of those things where you need, they need four votes, and people can only miss one meeting.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm asking. So if everybody feels that their schedule can accommodate that, I would ask for a motion to set the public hearing.
So be it.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? I think we can fit the next one in. Discussion impossible vote to accept the request to withdraw without prejudice the special permit application filed by Longfellow Design Build Incorporated for a retail grocery store at 647 Falmouth Road. We had, we had sent this up to the, it was an automatic referral to the Cape Cod Commission for review as a development of regional impact. In our packet, we have a letter dated January 20th, 2023. It's addressed to me and the planning board from attorney Kimberly Bylin, asking to withdraw this matter, and it's, it's regarding Nine Shellback Way, aka 647 Falmouth Road, Mashpee, Massachusetts, to withdraw the matter without prejudice. Withdraw the application for special permit without prejudice.
Do we need a vote on this?
Yeah, a motion and a vote.
Yes, I make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? Did you see my email about the, the, um, the email about the annual report?
Yes, it's in your, I put it in a Word document, and.
Is it in our packet?
It's in your packet.
Oh, okay, all right. All right, so I wrote the annual report based on last year's annual report and a couple of years ago. Is it after your memo? No, after the SOLA?
I think so. It should be in general order of the, of the business.
Okay, it looks like this. I don't know if you guys want to take a quick look at that? I don't know if you had a chance to review it?
I did.
Did you see anything?
You had asked me about the number, how many times the board had met. I have 28 meetings and.
28? I counted 24.
We held, we held some special meetings for.
Oh, okay.
Review of materials for our workshops. In addition, we held a special meeting for our public hearing for October Town Meeting, zoning articles.
Okay.
That's four additional meetings, yeah.
I want to just take a quick peek at it, make sure that I have all your names right and everybody's, you know, we represent the planning board and other committees. If you could just make sure I have those right.
Chair's in?
I got it.
Yeah, all right.
This is in here?
Yeah, it's in there, it's, that's it, it's double spaced.
I got one, this is in here.
Yeah. I didn't know if you, at last year's, you, you know, you went in and said what, what special permits and stuff were done. I don't know if you want to add a summary to that?
I can do that.
Is that good with everybody's?
Yep.
And the last one, every action you took for special permits and subdivisions, zoning contemplations, I included in the report, and I can do that if you'd like.
Yeah, yeah, I just didn't have time to do that. So is that fine with everybody? Is to, is to approve this and give it to Evan to add some more details about the actual special permits, et cetera, that we approved? Or started?
Yeah.
Sounds good?
Yep.
All right. I don't think we need a vote unless you guys want to.
All right.
All right, thanks.
I'll open the public hearing.
Yes.
I got something on the new business, but we can open the public hearing there.
Yep. Okay. Okay, seeing the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up the public hearing, the 7:10 public hearing. The applicant is Pleasant Homes LLC. The location is 22 De Terrace ME, 28 Block 198. The request is the applicant requests approval of a modification to Spring Hill West definitive subdivision plan of land that would modify the lot lines of lots 40, 41, 42, and give adequate frontage for three new building lots proposed for incorporation into the subdivision. The three proposed lots to be created and incorporated into the cluster subdivision are on a parcel of land totaling 6.04 acres. This proposal will continue the cluster configuration of the existing subdivision and will add 2.49 acres of open space consistent with the requirements of the Mashpee zoning bylaw at the time of the cluster subdivision approval in 1989. So they've requested that this be continued. We have a letter in here. Karen, did you, I'll, I'll.
You want me to read it?
Yeah, I get, I can't open up the, I can't open the special permit hearing until 7:15. So I guess we can read it because it mentions the definitive. Yeah, do you want to read it?
Dear Chairwoman Wagon, dated January 31, 2023, from Mr. Christopher Corain, as you are aware, this office represents Pleasantwood Homes LLC in its application to modify a special permit and modify an approved cluster subdivision plan. At the meeting of December 21, 2022, a procedural question arose as to whether the existing special permit could be modified to include the adjacent six acres. After discussion with both my client and town planner, I hereby respectfully request that the application to modify the special permit be withdrawn without prejudice. I would ask that the hearing on the modification to the subdivision plan be continued until March 15, 2023, to allow the applicant the opportunity to submit a new application for special permit. Additionally, on behalf of the applicant, I hereby request a 90-day extension of the 135-day time period the board has to file its decision on the definitive subdivision plan with the town clerk. Very truly yours, Christopher J. Corain.
So we can act on the request, a 90-day extension of 135, of the 135-day time period the board has to file its decision on a definitive subdivision plan with the town clerk. So is there somebody that would make that motion?
So be it.
Yes.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Is all, who, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? Okay. And then they want this matter of the subdivision continued until March 15th, 2023. I'll entertain that motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So if there's anybody here regarding this matter, the, the 7:10 public hearing is getting continued to March 15th, 2023. Should we set a time for that, March?
I thought we said 7:10.
Did we say 7:10?
I believe that the 5:32 Main Street public hearing is set to reopen on that date, March 15th. I would suggest 7:20 out of caution.
Okay, 7:20. Oh, well, I didn't make the motion, Mike made it.
Okay, so would you modify that motion to set a time at 7:20? You modify the motion?
I second.
Yeah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? Okay. Seeing that the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up the 7:15 public hearing. The applicant is Pleasantwood Homes LLC. The location is 22 De Terrace ME, 29 Block 198. The applicant requests approval of a modification to a special permit approved October 6, 1989, that approved the creation of a 45 single-family building lots in cluster configuration on two point, I'm sorry, 23.738 acres of land that preserves 17.153 acres of open space. The applicant seeks to modify the special permit decision to incorporate the additional three building lots proposed. Okay. So again, that letter that Karen read applies to this as well. So they're asking that the special permit application be withdrawn without prejudice.
So make that at 7:25?
No, 7:30.
Oh, that, we first have to withdraw it.
Okay.
So I entertain a motion to, to accept the, well, to allow the applicant to withdraw their application for the special permit without prejudice.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? So we have to wait for their application to come in before we set a public hearing date and time.
Okay.
And I think that's it. I don't have to, do I have to close the 7:15 public hearing?
You voted to accept the withdrawal?
Yeah, yeah, so that closes it, right?
Close the public hearing.
I take a motion to close the 7:15 public hearing for, regarding the special permit application.
Second.
So be it.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody abstaining or saying no? Okay, thank you. And then the 7:10 public hearing for the subdivision, that is continued to March 15th. And it sounds like people will, in the butters and.
They'll get renoticed.
Will get renoticed.
Yeah.
And there'll also be another legal ad in the newspaper.
Correct.
So anyways, so everybody that's in the audience, you know, besides that, that matter, you know, I do take public comment on any matter that's on the agenda, so just let me know. If I'm going really fast, stop me. But anyways, Evan, is there anything, there's some people in the audience, is there anything in particular that we should prioritize?
The parties I see are from the Old Barnstable Road neighborhood and then folks from Blue Castle Drive relative to the Oakway Highlands update.
Oh, okay, so let's go back to new business. Update and discussion with Jack Morin of Bayberry Building Company Incorporated relative to construction progress at the subdivision referred to as Oakway Highlands. Now, was there something in our packet regarding this?
I included in your packet the, originally, the agreed upon and recorded tripartite agreement, that is, the security being held by the town for completion of construction and installation of utilities. I've also included the schedule of performance that was attached to that agreement, as well as correspondence sent to me this evening by Mr. Morin, noting to me that he is unable to appear, but he put some written comments for the board to consider.
Is that in our packet?
It is. You'll see, it's at the top along with the other documents, there's some redactions in it of phone numbers and emails, so that's a way you could identify it.
Do you want to take us through this?
Sure.
I'm not really that familiar with this.
Absolutely. So Ed Pesci and I, consulting engineer, Pesci and myself, have been out to this particular subdivision a few times in the past year or so, particularly to pay attention to some drainage issues that are occurring towards the end of Blue Castle Drive, particularly in front of properties that are not subject to this particular subdivision. What we found is that the base course of pavement is graded such that much of the runoff from up the street, essentially from just east of Carriage Drive towards the western portion of Blue Castle Drive, they're running past all of the drains and collecting in the front yard of, of the Dorsey's who are sitting in the back. So Ed and I have been trying to work with Mr. Morin to resolve those issues. Ultimately, Ed's opinion is that the best solution is to make sure the grading is correct when the top course goes on. The concern we generally share is that Mr. Morin still has three or four homes to construct, and we are uncertain of his completion timeline, so I do have some concern that this drainage issue will be ongoing until that top course of pavement goes on. So we are actively communicating with Mr. Morin in that regard, but I specifically invited him here tonight to update you because you'll note in that tripartite agreement condition that completion of the construction as outlined in the attached schedule was to be completed April 1st, 2022, and that he would make annual reports to the board. Seeing that it's February 1st, 2023, and that the subdivision's incomplete, I felt it prudent to invite Mr. Morin to give you an update as to the schedule of work that is remaining, and to perhaps just have a dialogue with the board relative to the drainage issue that Ed and I have been working with him on. He's identified in his letter his intention to deal with some of the failing, I don't know, I don't want to say failing, but the slopes of the retention basins that need to be re-loaned, re-seated, and reestablished, and noted his intention to correct the drainage issue and the top course of pavement. And we've additionally asked that he use silt sacks as opposed to filter fabric to maintain the catch basins because they've been regularly plugged. So Ed has been very proactive in this regard. We've tried to maintain good communication with the neighbors who are experiencing these issues, but I wanted to bring this to the entire board's attention. It's unfortunate Mr. Morin couldn't make it. I think he had a family issue, but we can always invite him back again, and I'll leave it to the board.
I go up there all the time and see that drainage, you know, and I don't know why they still have the big piles of dirt, but at the end, given that the grass road, that just drains, and fills up those swales we have.
Yeah.
Can they put sandbags up the other end where it's, to stop the flow or something, or, till they, it could be next year before we put the grade in.
I'll tell you, I went and watched this during a heavy raid storm. It's a lot of water. It's missing multiple basins down a, you know, 100 or 150 feet of pavement, and missing, I want to say, two drains and collecting at the end of the subdivision there.
Yeah.
I, I believe Mr. Morin has put wattles or some, some, some hay bales, maybe Mr. Dorsey, if he wishes to address, you could identify that, but I'm, I'm not sure how much improvement it's, it's made. I haven't been out there in a little bit of time.
It looks the same, man. Just maybe the other day, you know.
It's a relatively substantial amount of water I've witnessed, collect.
He says in his letter that town engineer has recommended mediation measures, and we have implemented those recommendations. Is that true?
Generally, yes. Generally, yes. I think my, my concern at this juncture, understanding that the solution to the problem is a top course of pavement, and there would be a hesitation to put that top course on before the houses are built. However, it's a problem that I wouldn't want to have residents endure for too long.
Right.
And he's a year overdue.
Do any other board members like to comment before I ask if there's anybody from the public that would like to comment?
How long have they endured it now? Quite some time, right?
Some time.
So we're really, something really should be done.
I think it's certainly worth a conversation with Mr. Morin with the board to make some decisions in that regard.
Yep.
Is there somebody, is there anybody from that neighborhood that would like to come up and talk?
I have some pictures of this in front of my house of how it.
If you wouldn't mind.
First, state your name.
Oh, Joanne Dorsey, 86, Blue Castle Drive.
If you can send those to Evan.
I sent them to Evan.
I do have them.
I did, yeah.
And then he can send them to us.
It's just, like, that's it, when I pull out of my driveway, there's no way I have to go on the other person's lawn if I don't want to go through all this water. There's no other way. I can't walk.
So there's somebody in the audience that can't hear you because you're not using the mic.
Oh, I'm not using the mic.
Yeah, and that, so.
You can sit down.
Or hand, or, you know, whatever.
Yeah, it just gets so bad. It just completely goes from one side of the road to the other, full.
Oh, I know.
Just, it's like a pond.
I go out there every time it rains.
There's no way to walk, if I have to drive, like, if I don't want to drive through it, because I've, I've tried to drive, this is on the other road, the carriage road, this is after, everything's already dry, this is like two days after it's stopped raining, and you can see that there's still all these big puddles, but when it's raining on that road, you can't even drive down it because it comes to the door. That's how deep it gets in there, in mine. And then, and we have always had the yard sprayed for mosquitoes.
Yeah.
The past three years, and no problem. Never had to have, I had them come out one other time, and it was because it had rained like the next day after we sprayed. This year, this past summer, it was like I didn't even spray at all. This year, this past summer, it was like I didn't even spray at all, and I had to keep calling them. I thought, first, I was like, there must be something wrong. Are you using a new chemical?
Right, right, right.
And they were like, no, it's the same stuff. And he was like, we can't come out and spray it again, you know, I was like, you could not be outside. I couldn't, like, from my car, to get out of my car, to get into, I'd have to run, and I'd be like mosquitoes all over me. And then I realized it probably from all the water sitting out there. And mosquitoes are populating. You cannot be outside at all, at dusk, nothing. I wasted all my money doing the, paying for the mosquito stuff this year. It did not work a single bit. And then they have had to, you know, dig stuff on the road to do things like that. And since this thing started, they've cut our phone line four times. The last time was just this past Friday, when they decided to dig a trench going from where they have their trailer on the side of the road across to the other side. At 8 o'clock in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, our phone's dead. We have an alarm, our alarm system is set up to that. And I got a text from them saying, you know, communication failed, you know. I picked up the phone, it's dead, and Tim was out there, he was like, they just were digging right down, so he ran down there. You can see the wires sticking straight up out of the, and he's like, what are you doing, you know? And he's, oh, we figured that was an old wire down there. So they didn't even call Dig Safe or anything. It's just, they just dig when they want to. We've lost our phone. They finally just put it back on today. We just finally got it back on. It's, they just have no, I don't know, regard for anybody, except for doing it for themselves.
We've done that several times. I really think-
But this was the fourth time that we've, he's cut our phone line.
How long has this gone on?
Since it started.
What, year, two years, four years?
More than that. Whenever he started building, it's at least three, four years now.
I've been working on this, well, I didn't, wasn't on the team when the subdivision was approved, but it's been before the board since I started about five years ago.
Yeah, it's a long time.
Oh, yes.
More, yeah, it's got to leave you at least four or five years, yeah.
So we have, we have this tripartite agreement. I think we should enforce it. I think we should get advice from town council on how to enforce it. I don't think another meeting with the contractor is going to do anything. He has been in several times. He's been invited several times and not attended. And this is a pretty serious problem.
They still have three more houses to build.
And he's been invited to attend tonight, and he hasn't come. And this is, most of our invitations to him to come, we get a response by email, and he doesn't come. So I think we should get legal advice on how to execute this tripartite agreement, and with the intention of getting that course of pavement, pavement, that final course of pavement installed, regardless-
Of building a new house.
Of what the, you know, best practices are for when you put the final coat on. It's not our problem. It's not your problem that those three final houses aren't built. Right? He promised us it would be done by April 2022. And it still hasn't been. So I think that we should, we should flex our muscles on this one.
The lots haven't even been sold. The lots, the three lots haven't even been sold yet. So it's gonna, it's gonna be a while.
Yeah. They're still working on the two directly next to me. That, nobody's in them yet. They haven't finished them. It's been over a year. They've been working on them.
It's just like going to a neighborhood that's hard to develop and to put a new house in. So what's the difference if you put the top coat on now? They're not gonna do that much damage.
I don't know.
So, stay tuned, I guess.
Yeah.
And thank you very much for bringing in those pictures.
Sure.
That, that really had a huge influence on me.
Okay, thank you.
So keep taking pictures. Date them.
Yeah, and they blocked out, so when they did the phone line on Friday night, my daughter came up the road, and she sends me that, she's like, I can't come up your road? They didn't even, they had no notice, no like sign at the end saying road blocked off. So she had to go around, you know, go back up, back up, go around, go down Tracy Lane, and then all the way that to cut to my house.
I'm wondering if-
Because they just left the hole in the ground after they did it.
I'm wondering also if we can have some type of inspection by a town official at the next rain event. I don't know how, I mean, you would have to, but I'd like to know from DPW, the fire department and the police department, or one of them. You know, if these roads are flooded, would they be able to pass through them in case of an emergency?
Okay.
And I think that's the big thing, is safety and access.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Karen.
That sound like a plan?
Yep.
Sounds good.
I should have had a tree growing out of this.
Stop.
That's how, that's how filler comes with the silt.
Did you transplant it anywhere?
No, I should have took it out.
Okay.
We still on the new business?
Yes. We did the, I think we've done the first four bullets, right? Old business zoning bylaw amendments proposed for May 2023 town meeting. There's some stuff in our packet about the solar energy systems by law. And Evan wrote us a memo. Yay! Summarizing the amount of industrial land in town. There's an analysis. There are 1,394 acres of land zoned industrial I, I-1 in Mashpee. 1,160 of those acres are located on Joint Base Cape Cod. So the difference between that is 234 acres. Evan is saying that that is 1.7% of our total acreage.
Approximately.
Approximately. So medium and large scale, well, small, medium and large scale mounted solar sys- Oh, no, no, no. Medium and large scale ground mounted solar energies are only, systems are only allowed on approximately 1.7% of the town's overall land area. And by site plan review or special permit?
Site plan review.
Oh, okay, special, okay. And effectively prohibited in 98.3% of the town's land area. Oh, there's a table I made up that Evan adopted. Now, so right now, they're allowed by site plan review.
Yes.
But this proposed bylaw would make them all special permit, including an I.
I would suggest that we maintain the plan review and the I. Don't, don't, don't mess with that. There are still suitable parcels in there. They're being used for other things, notably the Landers property is a great solar site.
So that would be a change to this draft. Yeah, because it says, any medium or large scale solar energy systems shall be allowed in, and it's got all the different zones that we have, zoning districts, only after the issuance of a special permit.
Oh, I'll have to make a modification.
Okay, so that's one thing.
So that would be-
Are you gonna keep the special permit for?
For any other zoning district besides the I-1.
So I-1, we wanna, I would suggest, and agree with Evan, that, that right now in I-1, solar energies and energy systems are allowed in I-1 by site plan review, right? So however we go forward, we keep that. We don't require, do we, is this, is this enough detail to apply?
What do you mean? So this is only the special provisions section. The use table would still need to be modified consistent with whatever-
I see, okay.
You do here. So you picture the use table, and it say S.P., 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 P.R.
So-
In the applicable zoning districts. Whichever way you decide to go.
So I was thinking of kind of filling out this chart to see kind of like where we're comfortable putting medium systems and where we're comfortable putting large systems.
Madam Chair, I'd like to speak.
Oh, sure. Thank you.
Okay. Correct me, Evan, if I misspeak.
So bring the mic right up, right, like, oh, yep, perfect.
Okay. The proposal is that the bylaw will be for medium and large solar facilities in the R3, R5, C1, 2, and 3, and we said the I will just be by site plan for all sizes. Is that right?
Currently, the draft you have before you includes all zoning districts with no-
But we're gonna make the exception to the I, okay. All right. Let me go through the Tracer case, the City of Waltham case that went up to the Massachusetts Supreme Court, and give you an understanding of the case, and also give you my reasons why we should not have it in residential. We should not have solar residential. Okay. When the Waltham case, it's Tracer versus City of Waltham, 489 Mass. 775, 2022. When that case came about, the first thing they looked at appears is in the 1985 General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3. And this is the quote, "It was amended to include solar energy systems as a protected use." And it said, quote, "No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate the installation of solar energy systems or the building of structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy, except where necessary to protect the public health, safety, or welfare." Okay. So what the facts are, the developer owned some commercial land in Lexington. He also owned some residential land right contiguous with that land in Waltham. And he, he wanted to build an access road on that residential land in Waltham so that he could get to his job site to get to the solar system that he wanted to build. The building inspector in Waltham said, no, you can't, you can't do that because the access road would not be permitted because you're asking to do a commercial thing in a residential you're gonna access. So it's a, you know, ancillary, however you want to say it. You can't do it. So he brought suit in land court, and the land court interpreted the legal, the Massachusetts law, which I just read to you, as saying that the structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy would be the access road.
Yeah.
That facilitate. So you're squarely within the law there, so judgment basically for the developer. So then the developer also mentioned, and I'll mention this because I think this is something you're interested in. The developer further argued that even though the solar facilities were, were allowed in Waltham's exec, in, rather, in the-
Lexington.
Was it?
Lexington.
Lexington, you said.
In the industrial zone. The regulation was unreasonable because they only had 2% of industrial land in Waltham. He just mentioned that. So Waltham lost in the land court, so they took it to the appellate court, and the appellate court just bumped it right up to the Massachusetts Supreme Court. The Supreme Court affirmed the land court decision, in other words, for the developer, in finding that the road, the access road was ancillary to the solar system and thus protected under Chapter 40. So back to this language, the court held that a municipality has greater discretion to regulate solar facilities compared to religious and educational uses where necessary to protect the public health, safety, or welfare. There was no showing in this case about any of that, so that's where I'm going. Here are the facts. The court did not state, was silent, that the language of the Mass. law, Chapter 40A, said, it didn't say solar systems must be allowed in every part of a municipality. Didn't say that. The court didn't state what percentage of land area would be reasonable for solar facilities. I thought this was very interesting. There's a quote in the case to this Rogers, Roger case, 432 Mass. at 380. It said, "Preservation of residential character of neighborhoods is a legitimate municipal purpose to be achieved by local zoning control." The court did not show that there would, should be any limitation on this at all because, because it was necessary to protect public health, safety, or welfare. Nothing said. I repeated that. So to survive, if, if we want to, you know, as planning board here, and we don't want to get a lot of litigation, for us to survive judicial review, we have to demonstrate or show restriction or restricting solar facilities in the residential zone will not be permitted. We're not going to mention residential. We should just take a bylaw with commercial and industrial, silent on residential. Here's my argument. We can restrict it if it's, if, if it interferes with any of those three things, health, safety, or welfare. The argument would be, our welfare, our citizens' welfare can be defined, lots of words define welfare. Our well-being, our comfort, our happiness, you know, our quiet enjoyment of our house. Having a comfortable place to live is part of well-being, as health is and safety. We just need one. We quote that Roger case, "Preservation of the residential character of neighborhoods is a legitimate municipal purpose to be achieved by zoning control." We have limited residential land left. We have an affordable housing shortage. We are in a crisis. And I don't think we should take residential land away from the people to build a solar farm. So I'm advocating that we not touch the residential. We're silent on it in the bylaw and just go for C1, C2, 3, and keep I as we've, you know, changed it.
I, I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
Right now, everybody can put solar on their roofs.
They can do small solar on the roof, and I think they can do ground solar-
Should we mention that, though, say, you can't put medium scales or large scale as residential? Because I already have the right to put a, on, you know, solar panels on my roof.
Yes, you do.
The way you're stating it, I feel like you're eliminating that, too.
No, no.
No.
We're not taking that away. We're not. You can still do the ground mounted and you can do the roof mounted, but the C1, C2, 3, whatever you guys say, you know, medium, medium and large, medium only, medium and large, and of course, small for industrial. So there, you know, we're not being unreasonable here. I mean, we have something really wrong here with this housing shortage. And I don't know, you know, probably other towns in Massachusetts have this problem, too. But I think this is a reasonable solution.
I mean, last mean, I didn't want it in the residential.
I know.
You know, so I'm out for that, not in the residential. Large scale.
For large scale.
And medium scale.
And medium scales.
Yes. So we're saying-
Is there anybody that's, that is comfortable with large, large scale in the residential R3 or R5?
I'd like to ask Evan's opinion, because he had a, yeah, part of your argument last time was not adding residential could actually hurt some of the housing issue, or exacerbate some of the housing issue.
The point I was trying to make was that some of the adequate acreage for the use is in the residential districts where there's actually enough land area for the performance standards to be functional, enough land area for 100-foot buffers, big setback from water and wetlands, residential fence, et cetera. And there would be competing interest for redevelopment priorities in the commercial districts where, where housing opportunity would lie pending zoning changes, right? There's a big conversation to have as a community whether or not it's an avenue we want to pursue, but it's something this board's been contemplating. I caution the board in allowing solar uses where you have competing interests in the middle of a housing crisis. To one, the point of interest to me, and I think you pointed this out really well, Karen, was the, the silence about restrictions being reasonable for the purpose of protecting health, safety, and welfare. Our zoning bylaw is also silent in that regard. And I'm intrigued by the potential of crafting an argument and maintaining the restriction as it currently is. Let, you know, case law changes all the time, and it would take, it would take an appeal of that criteria to determine whether or not it's reasonable. Doesn't mean it's not a worthwhile endeavor. The only other thing I've been considering, mulling over in my mind, is there approximately 400 or so building lots that are divisible today in the R3 and the R5 districts where cluster subdivisions could occur and we'd get our open space. But then there's the 400 or so septic systems that would go into the ground, although we are making investments in sewer. Very good. There could be an opportunity to consider those parcels as an overlay district for solar to be consistent with the criteria for developing a cluster subdivision as an idea. Whereas the amount of open space to be created maybe is the same as a cluster. But instead of a residential subdivision, you allow large-scale solar in the same field. So whereas our zoning currently incentivizes the land clearing for houses, we could say we could incentivize and encourage the solar use on those properties. Whereas there would be no additional single-family dwelling growth, septic system, nutrient pollution from those systems. I've just been mulling this over as an idea, but I'm hesitant to recommend any particular pathway one way or the other regarding the applicability of the performance standards absent a little bit of engagement and education and understanding of where the community's heads are at. So I'm not married to any particular pathway, one way or the other. I've been advocating and working towards establishing an expectation for regular education and engagement. It's been my firm commitment for the past few years, and I want to make sure I do that for every potential change we do.
Agreed.
Okay.
What problem I have?
So.
With the solar farms, all the town gets out of it is some tax money.
And not much.
We don't get no electricity or, because they sell it to the grid. So I don't think it's worth it to put it in residential areas because we don't get that. We get real little tax money, too, because it's like a house property that they're getting taxed on.
Yeah.
You know, not a business.
That's why I'd be very intrigued in approaching this conservatively with an identification of a logic for restricting for the specific purpose to preserve the health, safety, and welfare and not encourage the potential conflict of uses for your mid- and long-term goals, redevelopment goals. I think the pathways that are being contemplated would certainly satisfy the law, but I don't know if it's the only pathway. But I'll leave that. I'll leave that with the board to discuss.
Okay. So I'm gonna, all right. So I'd really like to know, I'd like to fill out this chart with people's preferences. To going forward with this, with I1 would be, would remain as plan review, right? But by special permit to see if we can get a consensus going here for the allowance of medium and/or large-scale solar farms in R3, R5, C1, C2, C3. Small, medium, and large would be allowed in industrial I by plan review. Okay? So John, would you be willing to tell me what, where on that grid you would be fine with having medium or large-scale solar farms?
In every, every one of them.
Okay.
Where would, I'm sorry, John? All of them.
Comfortable with that medium and large in R3, R5, C1, C2, C3, and I. Okay. Which is how this is kind of written. Okay. So it sounds like, I'm just writing it down so I don't get this mixed up.
And I'd actually prefer the town planner's recommendation.
Right. And this can change. This bylaw can change. I think that Evan needs more time, but I want to submit this because it has the performance standards that we need to protect the town, such as, you know, no glare on residential areas, no glare on the street, a serious vegetated buffer, those things that are missing now. So we need to beef this up. So, okay.
I disagree. I think it can wait till October and let Evan do his job.
All right. I, yep. Okay. So Michael, do you want to, you know?
I'm with John, same thing.
John? Okay. So it sounds like, Karen, you're not comfortable with the system, the medium or the large being in residential.
Not comfortable, medium or large in R3 or I5.
I'm not comfortable with that.
R3, medium or large?
Medium or large, yeah.
Okay. So are you comfortable with, Dennis, are you comfortable with medium and large in C1, C2, C3?
Yeah.
Okay. And Karen, are you?
Yes.
I am as well. Okay. I'm not comfortable with them in residential at this time. I think that if there's parcels that Evan can work out or if there's owners of parcels that want to come forward, if we can get the C1, C2, C3 in this modification passed the select board and town meeting, then we should go forward in doing.
Question. May I?
Real quick, yeah.
If you want to proceed with the commercial districts, C3 zoning district is a very, is the commercial, limited commercial district generally along Main Street whose depth of lots is around 300 feet. I would not suggest allowing solar in the C3 zoning district. C3 is that buffer between the area essentially.
Can you point it out on our map?
Yes. It's this strip. That's it. And also bridges.
What does that orange represent there?
This is the C3 zoning district.
Okay.
So you see the industrial district is the purple behind it.
Mm-hmm.
And the 300 feet from Main Street to some arbitrary 300-foot boundary is C3. And the purpose of the district is to provide reasonable screening and limited uses for the residential districts across the street.
All right.
I agree with that.
Okay.
All right. I agree with that, too. How about you, Karen?
Yes.
John and Mike.
That could be buffer. That could be buffer, too.
But there's not enough to, not enough land.
If it were mounted with a buffer, you could barely even see it.
I think on Main Street, you want to encourage other uses.
Can you point out C2 and C3 for us?
Yep. So C2 is the pink here, center of town, and Polar Cave, and then the C1, the red.
All right. So it looks like we'd have three votes for C1, C2.
Yep. We can amend this.
Yes.
If we want, like, if we say.
We will.
Hey, in R5, there's a lot that's not going to be developed and, you know, okay, ours, we can, we.
Wait, now, C3, C3 by right, you can build a small one, right?
Correct.
Okay. So what we're saying is nothing in C3 that's medium or large.
Correct.
Right.
And there were, it's in your packet, there were a couple of changes made?
There was one change that I didn't include that just came to my brain.
Yes.
And we'll discuss this very briefly, but there are many, it's to my understanding that there are photovoltaic panels that include PFAS compounds that could potentially leach off of the panels. So we should include a provision in the, in the performance standards. Whereas any panel to be approved by this board would not contain PFAS.
Yep. Good idea.
My apologies for.
PFAS or any other, what do we want to call it?
Forever chemicals.
Forever chemicals.
Yeah.
To be determined in the future. And that's all, even if it were silent, you could obviously condition a special permit on such a, but we can spell that out very clearly for the developer.
In your opinion, do you have time to do your public outreach and education between now and town meeting in May?
Well, I, I mean, regarding the scope of what you've, I can certainly educate people to what you're approving tonight. I think for identification of.
An overlay district.
That will require, that will require time.
That takes more public engagement.
That will require time and outreach and stuff like that. But the article is relatively simple. I can certainly educate people as to what it does.
Yeah.
Relatively simply, but I think.
Yeah, but you'd want to have a broader conversation than just that.
I think so.
Okay. So it stands now. I'm looking for a motion to submit this article and any other related articles, such as the one that has that use table.
Use table. There were the footnote modifications in the land space requirements table that dealt with the frontage component, if you remember. And then, and I'll need to make sure that the definitions are all already added. And if they're not, we'll need to make sure that all the definitions are.
With the following changes, strike R3, R5, C3, and note that I1 permitting is by plan review, not special permit.
Were you talking about the setbacks? You were talking about use plant, use table? The solar setback is 200 feet from the rivers.
That's in here.
Said 100 from the wetland.
That's in here. Okay. Yeah, that's in here. That's, they're not numbered. I'm sorry. It's E6, ground-mounted systems, medium and large. They'll have a setback of a distance of at least 200 feet from any river and a setback distance of at least 100 from any water in wetlands. Then we have G8, fencing, a new line clearance shall not exceed six inches above. Shall not exceed six inches unless otherwise approved by the planning board in its written decision for good cause. And then there's to be written, but in general, in general concept is that no panel shall be approved that will.
Clear?
No, the PFAS.
Oh.
That will contain.
Will have a negative effect on.
No panels approved by the planning board via special permit shall include PFAS or other.
Dangerous chemicals.
Forever chemicals.
And they'll have to provide spec and laboratory testing when they bring an application board.
Right. So that's kind of my motion. I'm saying that I will entertain that motion.
So be.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? The only thing that I want to say is that this is in full intention of coming back to us for consideration for these performance standards being set for systems that would be permitted via an overlay district. Or October. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And when you say an overlay district, you mean in this?
It doesn't matter if it's R3, R5, C1, C2, C3, or I1. It would be, it would be carved out. These would be areas carved out of our.
What you're saying is it could be in residential.
Yep.
If we identify adequate or suitable parcels for these.
Okay.
But that's what I'm just saying. We're not approving that yet.
Yeah.
This is passed in full intention that we're going to work on this more. For example, there are people who have come forward with parcels, right? Those parcels should be considered as part of an overlay district. But you can't spot zone. You can't only have one group of parcels. Like, you have to, you have to have more than one grouping.
Well, this could essentially defeat my purpose of not having solar arrays in the R zones.
If it's an underutilized.
It could be a big thing.
Well, yeah, but I don't think we'll get through it for May town meeting. And because of the court case, I think we need to put these protective provisions in our bylaw now.
But that's why I asked if we could bring back.
Yeah, we can bring it back.
I kind of, with John, but I just don't want it right now as residential areas. But if somebody.
We don't want it from top to bottom of the town.
When you think of an overlay, Evan, in the residential, what criteria would you be looking at?
I mean, one is our, like, one criteria, obviously, pre-disturbed parcels. The other one I consider is what are the other allowable land uses in the zoning district? So, I mean, if tree preservation or, you know, forest protection is one thing we want to encourage, and we would prefer not to have proliferation of any new septic systems. I gave the example of subdivisible parcels that would, that are developable, but the currently incentivized use could have potentially detrimental impacts in consideration of the existing condition. Is that a place where a solar use, whose impacts are different, might be reasonable? That's kind of the discussion to have with the community.
And would you, Dennis, you will identify those parcels ultimately? And you would tell us why you feel this would be.
I think the way to develop an overlay district is through an engagement process and how the community tells what criteria.
But how do we know? I mean, we're not experts in this. How would we know what is suitable for solar and what is not?
Well, I think some of it is technical, like, is this lot cleared? Is it already pre-disturbed?
Okay, pre-disturbed. That's one.
That's one. And for me, it's the comparison.
Isolated from a developed residential neighborhood.
It could be landlocked.
Could be landlocked.
You could have an access road, get to it, but.
I think zoning is often about achieving certain incentives. You know, we want to incentivize the certain uses and discourage others. That might be, for me, that's a way to approach it.
I just have a question. The Haney property, would this come under that or they already got a permit, activate?
Haney property is bisected by C2 and R5 zoning boundary. The northerly part of the parcel is, has a Vernal, certified Vernal pool, and to the west has Charles River. So the southerly portion of the parcel wouldn't be covered by this. The northerly portion would. But it's, it would be developable for the use because it's all wet, it's wetland in the northern half. So it wouldn't be advantageous for the developer to use this bylaw on that northerly portion.
All right. If there's no more discussion, I'd take a vote. All in D to say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
Me.
Say no?
No.
So it's three to two. It passes. So what I suggest is you get this in, right? I think with the caveat that the planning board is going to proofread it one more time. Do you know what I mean?
Sure.
Get it in, write it up, get it in. We meet like, I don't know, what, the 15th? We met the 15th? Oh, we're not meeting the 15th?
You can meet. I'm just not here. And Karen's not here.
All right. So anyway, so we'd look at it one more time, March 1st. If you don't mind talking to Rodney about that.
Sure.
That we might have some typos removed. And I'll talk to the chair of the select board just to let them know we're submitting it. We're going to give it one more look on March 1st to make sure there's no typos and that kind of stuff.
Very good.
But I don't think they'll, I think that'll be fine. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Okay. Local comprehensive, and so I think that.
I wanted to make public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Do you want me to wait till the very end?
Is it?
It's about this.
Yeah. Did I miss it? We already took our vote.
Well, then I'll do it at the very end and tell you my opinion.
Okay. You can come up. You can come up. I'm sorry. I didn't, I just feel bad. We took the vote before you spoke. But you can come up. come up. I was caught off guard. Hi.
Lynn Barbie Surf Drive, assuming that most of you would not be surprised that I have an opinion about this. I feel very strongly that we do not want solar, except for small solar, as we do currently have in residential areas. Allowing even medium, much less large, incentivizes people who own residential land to sell it, to rent it out, sell it for solar. And that's not what we want people to do with residentially zoned land. I mean, I can think of one person in particular for whom this would apply, where there's residential land that where he could expand his existing development and put some more spaces for housing and not put solar. I do also think that it makes some sense to distinguish medium from large, ultimately. And, you know, maybe we do this now, maybe we don't, but it might make sense to have a bylaw for large and a bylaw for medium and a bylaw for small, because that is, makes it, clarifies it for people, I think. And we might want medium and commercial, but not large and commercial, I don't know, I'm not the expert on that, but I think it's very important. And I will tell you that I did my own research on this, I spoke to people in the town of Waltham about their experience. And a lot of my position is based on the advice that they mentioned to me about their experience and the lawsuit. So I feel very strongly, we need to have controls and regulations about buffers and all of those, as you all know. I don't want to have to do another citizen's petition for that. But we really need to preserve residential land for the desperately needed residential housing that this town needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that brings up a question to you, Evan, do you know if any town has an overlay district?
If any town has an overlay district?
Yeah.
I believe Falmouth and Sandwich both do.
Okay.
Numerous Cape Cod towns have taken that approach.
And do you know how they picked their overlay?
I don't off the top of my head. Easy enough to make phone calls to my colleagues, though.
Maybe, maybe, yeah, just to get a sense of what other places did.
You're saying that they do have medium and large, the right to put a medium and a large system in an overlay district, they have an overlay district in the residential?
Yeah, Falmouth, for example, just to, they, I think it was Cape Cod Golf Course Golf Club closed, and they redeveloped that site with a fair amount of solar on it. So pre-disturbed parcel, think about our, you know, golf course uses.
Yeah.
Is kind of another example of how they deployed that kind of pre-disturbed area identification. So it could be sand pits, but it could also be golf courses or some other pre-disturbed parcel. I'll look into that.
That's great.
What is the difference between a tax base of, how many houses, I guess this is a dumb question, you probably can't answer it because you'd have to know facts and specifics, but how many houses create X tax base versus, let's say, you do, let's see, what's the criteria for a medium?
Oh, you're asking how, what taxes are assessed on a.
Yeah, I'd like to know what the, I think you want to know the answer, too.
Yeah, that's what I said, we're not getting that.
Yeah, I can say pretty definitively, I could ask the assessor, but the revenues from a tax assessment to a single-family dwelling are more substantial generally per acre, per square foot, than a solar panel. It's hard to assess value on a solar panel.
Cluster subdivision.
Oh.
Well, let's say you have, in residential, you have a cluster subdivision.
Yep.
Is your question, is the revenue from a cluster subdivision?
Versus the cluster of a medium or large solar array.
Yes. I would say the cluster subdivision probably produces more per square foot value to the town than a solar farm would. But then there's no question about impacts.
But you got, you got kids going to school, and it's like nine, $10,000, so sometimes.
It's a question about impact.
You know, you got a lot of other costs.
Pounds per nitrogen to remove, you know, it's all cost.
What's the value of people having a house to live, you know, just compared to walking by, so, you know, it's a balance.
All right.
Well, one thing we have going for us on the performance standards, no matter where these things are put, we're going to camouflage them completely, right?
Yeah, yeah, the performance standards are good. That's a real plus getting them in there, so.
Not completely, because the sun has to get through.
No, no, I mean the buffer, a raft, you know.
Yeah, put big trees there.
Right. All right, next item, local comprehensive plan update.
Not many updates, you heard it last week.
Yeah.
Please pay, please do your homework and let me know what you think.
So.
I thought, excuse me, I thought you did a nice job last week.
Yeah.
Updating everybody.
Yeah, it was.
And it would have been nice to see more than five people in the audience, but nonetheless.
It'll be a good opportunity to loop everyone into the first draft.
I think we had, yeah, yeah, we did have more than five people in the audience. And I appreciate everybody that comes, even if it's just one.
If you could start getting me comments at your convenience within the next few weeks, maybe when I get back, I could have something to start perusing, I would appreciate it.
So I made a comment at the meeting, which was, I'm going to have trouble finishing this with Weston and Sampson's analysis of the survey and the materials that we collected and the opinions we collected at the workshops. Like, I'm not going to be able to finish my review and give comments unless I see what the data that came in at our workshops.
Yeah.
There's no reason to have a workshop if we're not going to use it to look at the stuff that we have now.
So what, okay, that sounds good.
So I can, I can, I can talk to Ashley Fisher if you, if you, if you're not understanding what I want.
No, I understand what you want.
We have all this data that came in, and there's been no analysis of it, like trends.
Understood.
What's the, what's, for example, I know, I've looked at the data for the survey, I know what's the highest ranked serious problem in town.
Right.
It's not going to surprise anybody. But we haven't seen anything, any report on that from them. And we really need that to go forward with our comments on our goals, our actions, our priorities. I mean, there's, there's no way we could do that without having reports on all the input that we had from our five workshops, our survey of 620 people. And we had some focus groups, I still haven't gotten the data from the focus groups. There was the Southport one, you had some with business communities, we, the tribal, we went to the, we went to the tribe, we had a small focus group with two tribal members. Like, none of that stuff I've received.
Any of us have received.
Right, but I'm the one asking for it.
Well, we'll all see it.
That's right. But I've been, I've been the one pushing for it, so.
Could, could we have, in addition to that, could, I really like this accountability, you know, putting the goal at the top, the policy being, and then the actions, the responsible parties, and then the timeframe. If we could have that page on every topic?
That's the plan.
Because people don't want to read stuff, but you give a little short, okay, that's what this is about.
That's the plan.
Okay.
That's what we talked about, you know, last week.
It's really good, it's.
Yeah, I like the chart.
Very good.
And I like the symbols, and I like the symbols that ended up in our minutes, thank you very much. That was really fun.
I'll get all of that to you before I leave to Brazil.
If you can get me, Brazil, ooh. If you can get me everything that you have as raw data.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be great, because, when are you leaving?
Saturday, the 11th.
Okay. I don't think an analysis will be done by February.
No, but I can at least compile, you know.
All right.
Every, and just a reminder, all the images of flip charts and everything like that is all available. If there are one or two things missing, I'll have to pay attention, but.
Well, I think you've, I think the four first workshops are all typed up.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
I think those are all typed up, I have those, I have the survey, there's also an Excel sheet of the survey data, so Evan can send that to you. All right.
We have it, didn't you send that out?
I sent it to those who requested it.
I think you should send it to all the planning board members.
If you want to manipulate the data, I'm sure.
And the four, and the, and the first four workshops, you have them in Excel, too?
Yes.
Yeah. That's great. Anything else about the local comprehensive plan?
No.
Okay.
Appreciate everyone's attention.
Thank you. Affordable housing and workforce housing? Any updates, Evan?
I don't know what's under that sub-bullet, I have under my town planning report.
Okay.
209 Old Barnstable Road, this is kind of what I'd like to focus on for now.
Clean water initiative, it looks like we have some zoning possibly for October. And I talked to Evan today about fertilizer restrictions, and I don't think there's anything in the zoning about that, right? It's, it's bylaws.
Correct.
Do we want to keep that on our agenda, then?
I don't think it necessary.
I don't think, because it's not, it's not a zoning bylaw.
There would be no articles submitted by this board for it. They may come a time for a stated, a request for a letter of support or something like that.
All right, good.
That is not going on the May?
I don't know.
Well, we've been discussing, my department head colleagues and myself have been discussing the fertilizer restrictions, and the one thing we want to be prepared to respond to when we discuss increasing potential fertilizer restrictions is understanding how we are currently enforcing our.
That's right.
Existing fertilizer restrictions. And the answer is, it's very challenging, and if we're going to consider increasing them, we want to know how to manage our current ones.
Yeah.
There are a couple of short-term actions we're contemplating, because we do have a nutrient control bylaw. We want to expand the scope of that bylaw to include not just nitrogen-based fertilizers, but phosphorus-based fertilizers as well, and resource areas, this really pertains to resource areas and doesn't expand beyond that. But we think there are, we need to, A, understand how we can enforce our current restrictions and how we can beef up those restrictions to be more consistent with the policy objectives of today, without, really without substantially overhauling what we currently have, but I think that's the number one thing we're going to be bombarded with as we endeavor to make these changes, is, well, we've had these restrictions on the book for years, and how is the town enforcing it? We want to know how to answer that question.
Okay. Sounds like a lot of work, all right?
It's a lot of work.
All right, board engineer report, nothing from Ed, huh?
No.
Okay. Chairman's report, I went to the ConCon meeting last week, gave them an update and encouraged them to watch our January 18th meeting where Drew came, and I thought that was a really good presentation with Drew and Evan about that, so, about the, kind of like, the staff's perspective on our clean water initiatives, so. They, they, they did, there were members of the ConCon that said, oh, well, I think it's, this really resides here on the ConCon, so they're taking it seriously. And next week, on the 9th, at 5:00, they are having a public forum on water quality, and it's going to be here, so I encourage everybody to go.
Will it be televised?
I'm assuming so, their stuff is usually televised, so I'm assuming Mashpee TV will just get there early, but I can't answer that.
What time is it?
It starts at 5:00, so they're gonna, they're thinking of increasing their meeting time, their monthly meeting time, either coming, starting their meetings early or starting to meet on another Thursday, an additional Thursday of the month. They get, like us, they get a lot of applications and public hearings, and that, that takes up a lot of their meeting time at their regularly scheduled meetings. So they're thinking of setting aside more time for water quality issues. Which is good, I mean, they're, they're right, they're the Conservation Commission, they're dealing with water quality issues all the time. Okay. So again, if there's anything that anybody wants to speak on, just raise your hand, okay? Town planning report.
209 Old Barnstable Road, no major updates, other than that I received an email today from Quashen Valley residents who summarized their survey results for me, and kind of summarized some of the engagement so far. I read in the newspaper today that, I just want to correct one thing, I did request a traffic study for the project at the request of the neighborhood, I think it's certainly something we can deliver upon. The newspaper reported that town manager Collins had approved that, those funds, I don't believe that to be the case. I've mentioned it to him, but the trust has taken no action on that particular item.
Oh, it come out of affordable housing trust money?
Or the town, or an additional, a different line item, however, it hasn't been firmly committed to financially yet, other than I've made the suggestion to the town manager that we follow through on that commitment.
When you do a traffic study, like, what comes out of that?
Potenti, you know, identification of potential safety issues or intersection delays and potential mitigation strategies to address those issues.
Okay, so they come up with some suggestions on how to mitigate the impacts or?
Yes, or if the, if the impacts are so detrimental that mitigation wouldn't bear an impact, they would elaborate as to why.
Okay.
But the major concerns I've understood from the neighborhood are generally traffic-related, limited sidewalks, dropping off school, school buses going through the neighborhood, deferred traffic from 151 to Great Neck Road North, number of issues that they're worried about that are primarily traffic-related. There are others, I don't want to minimize some of their other concerns, but the traffic stuff is my primary focus, because there's something I can begin to do right now to address those.
What are there other concerns?
Density, density on a three-plus or minus acre parcel. Concentration of affordable housing projects in the general vicinity, you know, Mashpee Village up the street, the ongoing construction of the nearby subdivision at Country Club Lane. I'm probably missing a few, but those are, those are to name some.
You missing anything?
I'm sure I missed a few, but.
I just want to make sure you guys can come up if you want.
So I want to first get the traffic study authorized and that scope of work underway as soon as possible, I don't know when that will begin. But then we'll be, we would reconvene with the neighborhood and the stakeholders to go over the findings and potentially discuss mitigation and pathways forward. I want to understand the traffic issues before we get into discussions about site design and architecture and building types, because if we can't understand the traffic and if we can't allay those concerns reasonably, I don't think we're ready to move on to the next step.
Yeah, why don't you come up and say your name and street, and then your comment, thank you.
Don Allen from Palmer Road.
Hi.
And we had an opportunity to meet with Evan, what, two weeks ago, 10 days ago? We met with Evan 10 days ago.
Yeah.
And I think we learned a lot about the priorities and plans for affordable housing, and let me suggest that when we surveyed our community, 100 homes, there wasn't one feedback that says they're not for affordable housing in Mashpee, they all recognized the need. The question is, is this the right location given traffic concerns? And it isn't traffic concerns as much as traffic safety. And I don't know how many people are on Old Barnstable Road in the morning or in the afternoon or in the evening, where we've diverted heavy traffic, trucks down a 30 mile, mile an hour zone around the corner down by the Country Club. It's a dangerous road, I don't think that road is designed for that kind of traffic. No sidewalks, it's dangerous for both vehiculars and pedestrians. So that's the big concern, adding 24 more homes in that area is just going to exacerbate that problem.
Thanks, Don.
Anybody else? Okay. All right. We already did the ACW.
And then lastly, the Phase 3 New Seabreeze cottages, Ed has been out shooting elevations, or at least his, his associate has been, Ed is in Florida still recovering from surgery, but he is, he's still engaging on that scope, and he should be able to get a report back to the planning board and the Flood Link Homeowners Association at cottages Phase 3 relatively shortly.
I'm going to skip ahead under correspondence, the DLTA, the District Local Technical Assistance Announcement, is that deadline passed?
Nope, that was just received by my office.
Do you think we could get, we could apply for that, for some money towards that HPP?
We did last year, and they turned us down.
Right.
Do you want to do it again?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
The deadline is 213, 23.
Could you re, could you do it before 213? Could you re, could you do it before 213?
Yeah, it's a very simple application.
Okay, so.
Change the date on last year's submission.
So anyways, right, so the housing production plan, right, is our, the town strategic plan on meeting our housing needs. The state provides these funds through the Cape Cod Commission, so the, the application would be to the Cape Cod Commission. I'd entertain a motion that the planning board make a recommendation to the Cape Cod Commission for approval of funds, D L T A funds towards our housing production plan costs.
So be it.
Okay.
Any discussion? Anything else we should add to the motion?
How much money are we asking for?
A million.
What did we ask for last year?
Probably asked for $50,000 last year. I'll remind the board that town meetings funded HPP at, up to $50,000 already.
This would go to all, any, in all towns on the Cape, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I'd ask for, I'd ask for half, 50, 25,000.
Understood.
25,000?
Yeah. Does that sound good?
Out of 192,000.
Well, yeah.
Total, yeah.
I mean, they gave money to Yarmouth for it a couple of years ago, so it's an eligible use.
I spoke with them last year, they were, there was, they had an interest in funding a specific application type last year, and I can't recall what it was, but we're essentially in queue, might be more advantageous to submit this year.
Why not?
And ask for 192 and say, well, entertain other towns.
They can have the 999.
15 towns would be about 13,000 each town.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll ask for 25, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Standing, okay, good. All right, anything else under town planning report?
No, thank you.
Board member reports, so the Cape Cod Commission just released a standing report for program, for their, for 2022. It, it looked really good. I suggest people go look at it. There's a lot of stuff about ponds, and they're, they're expanding pond network and pond programs.
Good.
Which, which is really good. I think that's a good thing for the commission to do.
They should have been doing that right along with the nitrogen.
Along, yeah.
I've been asking them year after year, why didn't we study that?
Nitrogen and phosphorus, yeah.
Oh, no, we got away about the nitrogen, but the pond are just as bad.
Yeah, well, they're saying it's going to be a bad year because we haven't had a cold when, and the water is still warm.
The booms are going to be crazy.
I guess it's 50 degrees, so we're going to have.
Wow.
Yep, they're expecting a lot of algae blooms and blue-green, algae blooms, okay. Community preservation, we meet tomorrow, I think in this room, I think, starting at 6:30. We have three open applications still. It's a funding request from the Affordable Housing Trust. They voted to increase their request from 300,000 to 500,000?
Three, no, 550.
To 550. Also, disc golf is still on the agenda, so it seems like Drew McMinnis, who's our conservation agent, but also is active in disc golf, has identified a spot. I think it's on the Schumett Road, right near the dog park and the pickleball courts. And funny story, you know, there was somebody that lives on that street that really doesn't like some of these activities on the street, and they met with him, and they've been talking to him, and he, they're going to take him out and play disc golf with him. So, yeah, so it, you know, always be optimistic for a happy ending, right?
Whatever works.
So anyways, and then we're going to go into executive session regarding the purchase of 751 Main Street. Design review, any report?
No meeting.
Plan review.
No meeting.
Environmental Oversight Committee.
No meeting.
And I did hear at the ConCon meeting, John, last week, that Drew was going to convene the Environmental Oversight Committee.
I'll leave it when I see it.
Yeah.
Right, because there's no chair or vice chair, and I guess Drew was the chair for a while, but took leave from that. So I think he's, he was going to talk to the town manager's office about, how do you convene a group when you don't have a chair or a vice chair? So they were going to start convening that again. Historic District Commission.
Don't mean waiting for evidence.
I'm sorry, Dennis, really dropping the ball on that one. I've been meaning to invite him.
Gee, I don't know why, you're so busy.
In the chair, to a meeting for weeks.
All right, any public comment? Okay, see.
I have something to say.
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right.
There's one person here.
Oh, did you?
Oh, no, if you have, you first, mine is a pipe dream thing.
A pipe dream.
Mike Perkins, 90, 94 Palmer Road. Just the comment on, on disc golf. Given the previous discussion on affordable housing, if we have such a crisis in a shortage of land, affordable housing, you know, I'm concerned about investing and setting up something such as disc golf, which I'm not sure how big of acreage that is, but it just doesn't seem to make sense. I'm all in favor of recreational activities, but it seems like when there's an affordable fund.
I'll tell you a little story. It's my street, it's my street, it's town on land, that whole, like, when you go on a Schumett Road, you know, the, the park's on the right, and the condos are on the right, that's where I live. On the left, there's a lot of town on land. There's an FAA requirement because the airport, the, the, the airport, the runways are at the end of the street. No structure can be built over 15 feet. So my condos and old colony, those houses were, were built before the FAA rule came in. I'm, I'm in the crash zone for the airplanes.
Okay.
But, good point.
I'm glad you.
Good point, and that's one of the reasons, right, because there were other spots being considered, and I was in the room when they were being mentioned, and I was cringing because exactly the same, same thought. I was like, oh, no, we need that for affordable housing.
Okay, thank you.
Good point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come to more meetings.
Okay.
Oh, Dennis, go ahead.
You know how we, we like to recycle a lot?
Sure.
When I was going to the recycle center, I seen all the trees being cut down. I know they have to be cut down, but I was thinking, why couldn't we give them to, maybe the tribe or, or set up, cut them up, give them for firewood? Maybe we can recycle it, because all they do is grind them up. Even if we took the logs, put them in the transfer station, paid somebody to chop them up, put them in cores, we could sell the cores for $50 a core, or enough to pay their company who cuts them all up. There's a lot of loss, even on 130, they wiped all the trees out, and they can, all they do is grind the trees up. And I was talking to a couple of tribal members, and he said, we got that farm off Quashnet, we could take them logs there and give them to the tribal members. And I says, yeah, but I like to give them to the whole town, too, you know, because a lot of people heat by wood. And the, my electrical bill, I heat my whole house electricity, was $1,100 this month.
Mine was 700 bucks.
How much was yours?
700.
My heat hasn't been over 65.
And it hasn't been that old.
It's been warm.
Oh.
I was blaming the power tools because my house is under construction, you know?
Yeah.
I don't know, it was shocking.
It's usually the heat.
Is that the first big bill you got, ever?
Well, usually, like last year, this time, it was colder, but it was like 650.
Yeah.
But they changed the kilowatts, we're paying.
Yes, I know.
32 cents, instead of 17 cents.
Yeah.
And when I first built my house here, the electrical companies had a special rate. If you did your whole house, you were half the rate that normal people pay. After three years living here, they changed that, and so we're not going to do that no more.
Yeah.
And the other problem we're having is because we don't have enough gas coming into the state. They come on the, you know, the liquefied gas on a ship, that's three times the cost because Laura Haley, she didn't want to put the pipelines in. Twice, she stopped them. And that would have kept electricity down, because most electricity in Massachusetts is done by natural gas. I worked on a lot of coal, the coal power plants, where they were shutting them down